Close to the Blanchard's. But you're right, on the opposite side.
Yes.
Let's see if we can look and see who's. January fifteenth. Councilmember Reeser. Councilmember Reeser, would you be willing to after the opening prayer, please? And Councilmember Eric Erickson. Eric, could you lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
All right, thank you. Okay. All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you for your patience. It is six thirty according to Apple Time, which is what the world goes by now, right? So we'd like to get this meeting started. This is a city council meeting of January eighth, twenty twenty-five for the city of Rexburg. Welcome, everyone. We'd like to start off our meeting this evening with a with the prayer and a pledge to the flag. And I've asked Councilmember Reeser to offer the opening prayer for us, and after which Councilmember Eric Erickson will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Reeser.
Our dear Father in heaven, we're very grateful at this time for the opportunity to meet together as city leaders and citizens that we might be able to discuss the the needs of our community. We're grateful for this wonderful place that you have to live and the good people that are here. And we ask that thy wisdom may be upon us this evening, that we might be able to make wise choices, that we might be able to do those things that are the best for the majority of our of our citizens, Father. We're grateful for these opportunities that we have to serve. And we ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Stand and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Let's go ahead at this point in time with the roll call of the city council members, please. Thank you, Mary, for sitting in for us tonight. We appreciate you.
Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Colin Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Eric Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Reeser.
Here.
Council President Walker.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. We have a full council. And we'll move on to the items on the agenda. Our item number three is to, we need to amend the agenda as per Idaho State Statute seventy-four dash two oh four four B to include item six A two, which is to discuss winter parking issues. This is something that's come up just recently, so we need to amend the agenda to be able to talk about that. So could I hear a motion to amend the agenda at this point in time? Mr. Go ahead.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Councilmember Chambers. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Council President Walker. Any questions on this before we vote on it? Let's see, let's do a roll call vote. Just, I'm not sure if we have to or not, but let's do that, just to make sure, so.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Colin Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeser.
Yes.
Council President Walker.
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. We will amend the agenda and talk about that down later on the agenda. So thank you. All right, item number four is a time for public comment. This is a moment for items that are not on the agenda. And if there's anyone that would like to comment on anything or let us know anything, we ask you to please come to the podium, state your name and address. Is there anyone that would like to make comments at this time? Anyone online? All right, then at this time, I would also like to just introduce to you Mr. Todd Covington. He, Todd, we went through the interview process for a new streets foreman, and we selected Todd, who was already working in our streets department as the assistant foreman. So Todd, tell the council a little bit about yourself.
Well, my name's Todd Covington. I've worked for the city eight years now on the street department. I backed up Bill when Bill was gone, so I was his assistant. A little bit about myself, I like to rodeo. I follow my grandkids to rodeo, my boys to rodeo. That's what I do for fun in the summer.
Who'd have guessed?
And I was, I was a rodeo clown for many years, and I was the funny man over here at the rodeo for fifteen years.
Oh, really? Oh, I didn't know that. That's cool. Okay.
Are you the Ashton Covingtons or the local Covingtons?
Rexburg, yeah, the local.
Rexburg.
He's the local Covington.
Well, Sugar City, Rexburg, yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let's give him a hand. We appreciate you being willing to take on the heavy responsibility of being the streets foreman. It's not always an easy task, so we appreciate you. Just so that you know, I appreciate Todd during the time when in between Bill leaving and, or retiring, I should say, and his selection, Todd filled in as the interim streets foreman, and he was very active in looking out for things and getting the Christmas lights up and making sure they were all working and stuff, so appreciate him a lot and taking that on and stepping up and doing that, so. So anyway, okay, that's item number four. Item number five is a public hearing. Is it six thirty? Yeah, well, we started at six thirty, yeah, okay. We have a public hearing for the final assessment role for local improvement district fifty-three. This is designated as ordinance number thirteen twenty-six, if the motion passes and consider it first read. We'll ask Keith to bring us up to speed on this LID and answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So this LID covered Fourth East as well as Second East, so that segment of Second East from Main Street where we took out the dip up to First South. We did a little over Fourth East by Smith Park over there, as well as Hillview Drive up on the hill. And then, and then a fair amount of the roadwork was actually on Barney Dairy Road and North Hill Road, reconstructing those ones. We did a crab project on that. And so in front of you, you have the the property owners portions. Some of those you'll see percent change on the side. That's where they, if it's a big negative, that's, they did the the work themselves. That's why it shows up as a negative. Unfortunately, our estimates were quite low compared to what the actual bid came in at. So you see down on the bottom, we're almost, we're like thirty-three percent lower than what the actual price came in at. One of the high ones was like a fifty-one percent, the other one was a lower one was like fifteen percent, but most of them are are higher than our estimates, unfortunately, but so we we take a look at those and, but we've, we actually looked back over the past six years, and we're, we do see a pretty hard climb in concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk, as well as sewer line replacements. And so trying to guess what some of that might be, some of that we're figuring, you know, we did have, over the past couple of years, we did have a lot of sidewalk needing to be replaced and redone because of that.
We're talking warranty replacement, right?
Yeah, warranty, thank you, Mayor. Warranty replacement, so we're thinking, you know, some of that might be why we're seeing that significant increase in costs. Now, the past two years where we've done, this was the first year where we done, did everything with the the sealant on it. And the year before, if you remember when I came in, we talked to doing kind of the driveway areas, and that seemed to hold up well, so we're we're seeing, it looks like that sealant is working well, but that's also additional cost, right, that's raising those those rates up.
Can I ask one question?
Questions, yeah, go ahead.
Let's see, so we've had a whole winter with the sealant, right? Or is this, I can't remember how long it's been.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so we had two, two winters on the on the one.
I couldn't remember how long.
And so, and I haven't gone out and looked recently, but I know last, after last year's winter, that things were holding pretty good.
That's good, and no one's complained about it being slippery or anything like that?
No, I haven't heard.
Haven't had any complaints on those. And this one that we did out in front of City Hall looks really good, so so far it's it's doing well.
Yeah. So that's been good, but it's additional cost, unfortunately.
Yeah. Any any further questions? I mean, it is unfortunate that on concrete and the things have gone up a lot, but there's not a whole lot we can do about costs increasing, so.
Have you had any?
We have had some questions. We've had people come in. Noah has addressed a lot of them and explained things to them, and Keith has talked to some of them as well, and you know, can't say that they've been happy, but they've at least been satisfied with the explanation as to why, and.
So have you got things in place to where you don't miss by thirty-three percent next time?
I hope, but anytime you're doing an estimate, right? I mean, generally when we're doing estimates, right, we take last year's pricing, look at volumes, look at things like that and think, okay, we know is it going to go up a little bit, right, so we'll do that, but it's gone up, I mean, if.
Then the hockey stick thing, yeah.
That's what it looks like on us. So you know, back in two thousand and eight, we had a similar issues with things escalating faster than than what we were estimating. It's just the work and the amount of money that is available when you look at all the ARPA funding and things like that, and the amount of work that's available. We're seeing definitely prices, inflation escalate with that, and we just didn't, didn't hit the mark on what, how much escalation it was going to be. So hopefully, we always hope we estimate high, but we also don't want to estimate so high that we're out of the ballpark the other way, right? Because generally on those first estimates that go out, you know, that's when most people come in and are like, you know, what, what's going on? These seem crazy high, and we're like, well, we're trying to, you know, be somewhere in the ballpark, but it's, it's not always easy to outguess what the contractor is going to charge us.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further questions? All right, then, if none, I would entertain a motion to.
They're going to have the hearing.
Oh, sorry, yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. That's why Council President Walker is here to keep me straight. All right, at this time, we'd like to open a public hearing, declare the hearing open. We will hear anyone who would, excuse me, like to testify in favor of this action first. And after that, we will hear from anyone who'd like to testify in the neutral position, after which we'll hear from anyone who'd like to testify against this action, so. Is there anyone who would like to testify for this action at this time? Come on up. Hearing, seeing none and hearing none, is there anyone who'd like to testify in the neutral position? And if there is none, is there anyone like to testify against this action at this time? Seeing none, we will declare this public hearing closed. And at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to move forward on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I still move that we accept ordinance number thirteen twenty-six and consider it first read.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes, we will move forward with sending out those bills, the fun part of things, right? Okay, item number six is our staff reports, and Mr. Davidson is already at the podium, so since that's the next item, that works out really well.
Yes, it does, thank you. For once, I get to be in front of Matt.
Yeah.
So the the first action item we have, we have a a grant from LTAC, and so this grant is for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the area that we're looking at using this grant is over on Mill Hollow Road. So from Second South down to the hospital, we have a a section of roadway that we've painted a white stripe to allow for bikes and pedestrians to use that portion of the street. This grant would, we'd take out that asphalt area and put in a sidewalk that runs down that that side and then ties into it. So we felt like that would be a good opportunity to use these funds to enhance, because it's a pedestrian safety grant. And we do have several children that walk down that road as they go to the junior high school. And so I'm just looking for council's acceptance, so we can get that put in. We we have to get all the plans and everything submitted this this month on it, so.
All right, so then the question before us is, do we want to accept this grant money and put it to work? Is there any?
Is there a match? I mean, is there any match on it?
I don't think there was on this one. If there was, it would be seven percent, so it would be a pretty minimal amount.
It seems like this one was, I think this was a no match.
I don't think there's a match on it.
So, so Keith?
This summer, yeah.
Keith, will this, will this be enough money to complete what your, what your project, your?
Yeah, this is what we've estimated, and when we put it all together, we were figuring about two hundred and fifty thousand for that.
So you don't anticipate there being any other funds we could use in other areas, or that that one project will use up all of these funds?
Yeah, that's what we're anticipating, that that project will use up all the funds.
Okay, based on the last projections, it might be a lot more. You never know.
Could be. Hopefully, we can. I mean, the nice thing about this is we, they can use a curb machine to run all the way down. There's some efficiencies we get when we're doing piecemeal on curb. It gets quite a bit more expensive.
So, did you say that you're going to be narrowing the road, you're going to be taking some asphalt out and putting a sidewalk there?
Yeah, so we'll narrow up the road through that section. But basically, it's already narrowed up, we just have that white stripe. And so this, this will just give a little more increased protection for the pedestrians as they walk along the sidewalk. It's still going to be next to the road, but at least it elevates it.
Yes, go ahead.
And is it going to hook in with that Hidden Valley Road? Like, how far does it extend to the?
So it's going to go from Second South, we'll tie in the sidewalk there, and then it will go to the hospital. And so that's where we have sidewalk along that section of road. And so we'll just tie in that that section to have that sidewalk go all the way down.
And how wide will it be?
Uh, just a five-foot sidewalk. Yeah, it will be on the west side of the road.
West side, yeah. Okay. Any other questions? All right, then I would entertain a motion to accept this grant and put it to work.
I'll also move.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Let's move on to item number two.
Okay, so this item, so we've, obviously, we've had lots of on-street parking happening, right? We were already discussing it around Porter Park. And so Noah had brought up the suggestion, because going into the winter, in fact, the the police, I think in the past two, three nights, have issued over two hundred and thirty citations for on overnight, for parking on our streets overnight. And so obviously, we're seeing that Natalie, I think, has received several phone calls about, where am I going to park? Where can I do this? And so we don't utilize the Rexburg Rapids parking lot in the wintertime. We don't even plow it, right? And so we do have some parking that we could open up, and so the thought was is if we opened up that parking and charged for it to allow people that to get, that have brought a car and have no place to park it, to at least get it off the street. Now, we don't want to compete with the private industry, so like DJ Barney, his storage units out there on Airport Road, Mark Porter has RV and car storage at his site. They charge, I think DJ's forty dollars a month, and Porter's is fifty dollars a month on that is what they charge. And so we do have some fees already established for parking. There's one, it's kind of a construction consolidation fee that we were thinking of potentially using, and that's like a two hundred dollar fee, and we would allow them to park their cars there starting now or tomorrow, if council approves it, and then till.
End of the semester.
And, well, not end of the semester, we're just looking, until, until the restrictions off, so of March first. Because obviously, we don't want to impact the park with a bunch of people parking their cars there when the park starts being utilized, right? In the winter months, we don't plow, we don't open it up, so the the park isn't really utilized. And so we we felt like this would be a a good gesture on the city side to open up some areas so people can can park their cars. And we would take a look at it, how it goes, this, and then reevaluate and get with the council. Because there's a lot of things, probably discussions, we want to look at, but trying to move with haste on this. Because obviously, there's, starting tomorrow, there's not going to be the ticket forgiveness going on. And so we wanted to to kind of open that and get council's thoughts on that.
Okay, open for discussion. Is there any questions? Yes, go ahead.
So how much of the parking lot are you planning to dedicate to that?
So what we're looking at, thanks for bringing that up, is really, so we, we plow and berm it up right here, and we berm it up right here. But what we were looking at is opening up this section up through here. And then, obviously, depending on the demand, we could open more if we need to. But for right now, I mean, we do have cameras that sit in this area that that we can see if something was to happen or something to go on, so I think that's a good side to do it. I mean, I was originally thinking maybe we just open up parts over here, but I think with the cameras, so if something happened, we have some cameras over there, that this would be a a good spot to look at at first of where the the parking, and then we would do some signs, we'd just quickly make some signs up and post them there, so people would know that you have to have a permit to park here. You can't just bring your car in. If you bring your car in, it'll get cited, it's a, it'll be like parking your car on the street overnight, fifty dollar or towed, because we don't want to just have everybody just think, oh, I'm just going to park there. So we just put these signs up there.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm assuming we have the the equipment to plow parking lots.
Yep, yep.
Because.
If you, if if it gets approved tonight, I've already talked to Todd about first thing in the morning having our crews open that up.
But with a full, a full the parking lot being full of cars, we can still plow, okay?
Yeah, so one of the things we would do, right, if, normal plowing like we do in the other parking lots, we plow in in between the cars, the lanes. If we had a big event, we would have all their information, and and we'd let them know that, hey, we have a big event, you need to move your cars out of this parking lot at this time. We're going to come plow that parking lot. So, yeah, that's a good question.
Just, yeah, go ahead.
And so the police feel like they can, is that?
Yeah, so I had a conversation with Kellen this morning on it, and they, they're ready to go if it gets approved. What we use is we'd use our, because we can't order those hangers, right? It it takes too long, so so we have a bunch of the hangers for the U permit, but they can make a a W permit, and they've already kind of have that set up, and they'll just put a sticker over that, and then we'll, we'll run with those. And then obviously, we're going to use the funds, right, to to cover what costs.
Plowing.
Right, so the idea would be this plowing, the police enforcement, and then if there's, obviously, if there's enough that came in also, you know, there probably should be some going back into a fund to maintain that parking lot where there's crack ceiling and just doing general maintenance on that. That could help the the general fund in the parks area.
And then all the ice skating rink parking is just going to be over there on the other side?
Well, so that's, that's, that's something we would, right now, the ice skating isn't going to be an issue at this point, right, because they're doing construction. But that's something that we need to address for the next year. I would think that next year, you know, depending on what the demand would be on the ice skating rink, you'd probably want to leave this area open for ice skating and then look at this area for potential parking.
Everything closed.
And I think in the future, we need to have a sit-down with the folks up on the hill. And because truly, I mean, it's both our problems, but, but it's the students that cause the problem, so maybe they need to designate some long-term parking. They've got plenty of ground up there that they could do that with, and so maybe we need to have that.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a good discussion to have.
It's kind of a broader discussion even than that, you know, we're, we're looking at opportunities for maybe some, some type of public transportation system where they don't need to bring as many cars, which, because, you know, building parking lots are are expensive. And so, you know, we're, we're looking at, we're trying to be creative in I noticed you shake your head, say it won't work, which I, I tend, I tend to agree with you.
Yeah, I don't think, people love their cars.
Yeah.
Especially out west.
Yep.
But, but if you were, if you were forced to stick your car over here all winter and you live clear up there on the hill, you know, they're probably going to jump on a shuttle or something rather than walking clear over there to get their car, so. I mean, you know, you got to start thinking about, okay, what's, what's going to work? We actually did a survey two years ago, I think, and it, there was a pretty high percentage of college students that said they would use a transportation system, so. But we're not looking at buses and things like that. We're trying to be creative and look at, there's, there's some software systems out there that do what they call mini, what do you call it? Mini, mini, mini vans and things like that, that that are kind of on-demand transportation, so it's not like we got buses running around kind of a thing that we're paying for. So we're trying to be creative in coming up with something that is working in other places. We're, we're actually talking to and looking at other cities that are doing similar types of things, and because I'm like you, I, you know, I go to some of these cities and I watch these big buses going by, and they got one person on them, or sometimes none. Other times, they might have some, but anyway, so that's, it's kind of a bigger discussion than just more parking lots, you know.
Mayor, I have one question.
Yeah.
I know the campus offers this right now on parking up there. Do we know how much that's utilized by the students or not, or is it empty? Oh, you can't answer that, but that's something we need to probably research, too.
I think, I think Stephen had talked to them about that, didn't, Natalie, do you remember if he? Seems like somebody had talked to them, and they said that they were, were they selling that pretty, do you remember? I don't, I don't remember. Yeah, up there by the temple.
Up by Seven, on Seven South.
It's only available to those in the pit though, so like the coal, the sub down.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah. Yeah, there's some, there's some things there, and and it's, it's generally been fairly full, I think, but I don't know. Chief Rhodes, do you, do you know anything about that, or?
I mean, the, the parking issues, it's been all over town. It's not
Yeah. Okay. All right, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say, I know it really is the students, that's a large bulk of it, but I mean, where I live in Summerfield with the townhouses that don't have a driveway, there are, you know, way more cars than can fit in their garages, and so they're just parked all up and down the streets.
The streets.
So I feel like it's anywhere that there's townhouses and things like that. So, I mean, I'm sorry, but I think the average household has like twice as many cars as people, so I think it's like a problem across the board. And then I was wondering if the council could be involved, and I'm, I'm interested in the public transit thing you were talking about, so could the council be involved in before it gets?
Yeah, I would, I would encourage you actually to do some research on different types of systems, maybe if you travel somewhere and you see something, or you know somebody that lives somewhere where they've got something that works. You know, in Idaho Falls, they've got this little deal called Gift, and I think it's working to some degree. They're small little buses that they have running around. I don't know that we want to go that way, but, so I guess that's what I would say is if 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 it's of interest to you and you want to help us do whatever we can to to find out more and be creative. We have gotten some requests from, you know, some of this older folks, some of the senior citizens that live at places like. citizens that live at places like Carlow and things like that, that have, struggle a little bit to get to medical appointments, and so there are some, some of these, like I say, some of these on-demand type systems that are trying to address that type of a thing. And so, we're just kind of looking at all kinds of things. So, if you want to give any input on anything you see or hear of that, that might work, that might be helpful, we're open to ideas, yes.
Yeah, so, so one of the things, that way the whole council's aware is, is we've pursued a couple times for transportation grants to do a study, because I think it would be valuable to actually do a pretty in-depth study to see what, what type of transportation. Because I'm, I'm one that's like, I don't want to just put more vehicles on the road without taking vehicles off, right? And so, I think a study would, would be beneficial, and Mary's applied for, I think, a couple different grants to see if we could get funds to do that, that study.
Yeah, because I just had to admit that I'm a little dubious that it would be helpful. So, I think like if we had a work meeting or something and had the information and the council could give input before we like got out way down the road, I appreciate that.
Yeah, definitely. Yep. All right. So, the parking is what we were, is what the action item is. So, if there's no other input or discussion that you want to do, I would entertain a motion to move forward with the parking location and costs and fees as discussed. Is there such a motion?
I'll try and put a motion together. I move that we open the parking lot at Riverside Park to winter parking by permit at, as the costs and fees as described by Keith.
$200.
Nope, is that it? Is that good enough?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, thank you. There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by council member Chambers? Okay, all right. And call them both. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
I have one question.
Yeah.
So, it is going to be presented, though, to anyone who gets one of those permits? This is kind of like a pilot program so that they don't, people don't start thinking?
They're not counting on it.
Yeah, not counting on it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we can, we can lay that out and say, you know, we're just trying this out, this isn't set in stone.
Don't go buy five more cars.
Because, yeah, because we want to, definitely want to see how it, how it pans out.
Okay, good point. All right. Motion and a second on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We will go ahead and move forward with that item. Okay, any further questions for Keith? Anybody know where a pothole is? We can't find any so far this year.
Yes, there's one on First North, the four-way stop going westbound, it's right on the, right on the side.
Have you been there? Because I thought they had gotten that one.
They patched a little bit, but it's already popped back up.
Oh, has it? Okay.
It just needed to be redone. It's, it's going to pop again, but that's, could be one. And the state has one on Main Street, but.
There's several on Main Street, yeah. In fact, I was going to call you the other day, too, as I was driving around and just, there's a couple, as long as you're making a list.
Better write them down.
Out on 12th West, kind of between the golf, well, between the stoplight and the golf course, there's some, and then, well, they're just kind of all the way along there. And most of them that I'm seeing this year.
North.
Right in the middle.
Yep.
Right in the middle where that joint is, you know, they're just, that's popping open. So, just kind of all the way out 12th West, clear to where you, through the roundabout, there's a few here and there. And there was someplace else, well, like I say, on Main Street, there's, it's kind of the same thing, that joint right down the middle, seems like it's popped, so maybe we need to notify the state about that.
Could I say one more thing?
Yeah.
I just remembered. I know this is the state's problem, too, but the interchanges, the new interchanges, when it snows, I don't know if anyone else has noticed, but when it was all snowed over, like my teenage son was, another car went in the wrong way, like they were headed east and a car went in front of him and went the wrong direction because there are no signs up pointing them the right direction. It's on the road, but when the road is snowy, then the arrows are covered. And so, somebody went in the wrong place and it was really scary, and he's 16, so he doesn't have the same reaction time as an adult. So, anyway, I don't know if they thought that through, but when it's covered, you can't see those arrows. So, if you don't know, if, if you're not familiar with it, then it's dangerous.
Yeah, I can bring that to their attention.
One other thing, too, that was just brought to my attention today, as long as we're talking to the state, to ITD, I had a person mention that out there on the north interchange, that I think he said in the morning, especially when he comes in to work, or in the afternoon about 4:30, I guess, when people are leaving work, you know, when it's the busiest, he said that the stack, you know, going north and south gets really long, and so I don't know if we need to ask him if they can lengthen that out.
Yeah, I just heard about that the other day, so we can talk to him about, because I'm sure they've, they might have the priority on the.
On the freeway.
On the ramps.
Yeah.
And so, so, yeah, I heard that that stack can come all the way back down to Walmart.
Yeah, he said he's started to just drive out through Sugar City to come into town because he said certain waits so long in the mornings, so that's just something we probably need to have him change a little bit. Okay, all right. Any other complaints about the roads? All right, thank you, Keith, appreciate it. All right, we will move on to our finance report with CFO, Mr. Matt Nielsen.
Okay, so we got a couple budget adjustments, I'll just hit both those first. So, this first one, I think you guys are aware of these projects, but we started the Whirl project over at Porter Park kind of late, and so it really happened in this fiscal year instead of last year when we had budgeted that. And then, the pickleball courts, of course, we had tons of discussion on that last year. So, we've added the budget for this year to do that. They anticipate doing that sometime in May, that they would come do that. So, about $66,000 there. The ADA Whirl project was about $80,000. You know, there was quite a bit of curb being involved there, they had to remove swing sets. They also added a smaller ADA swing that we already had in inventory for us as part of that project.
One thing, too, Matt, that I might mention is there's a couple of spots on the existing sidewalk that we fixed, too, that were, that had dropped down. We had a guy come in and pumped those up so that they're more ADA compliant, you know, and that was part of this deal, too.
Yeah. The good news is, we did get recently a grant from Rocky Mountain Power for $20,000 to go towards the pickleball. I think we, we need to do, we need to put a sign up for that to know it's them. And I think we committed it for five years, if I remember right. So, really, what this is being paid with is we transferred the money in for these projects, so it's coming out of carryover, and then, of course, the $20,000 would be new revenue from that contribution from Rocky.
I don't know if we mentioned the Reeves Foundation money on there, too.
Yeah, that was part of the carryover, so we had received that last year.
Yeah.
For $25,000, so. And then, what this will do, I, you know, after we finish these projects, I would anticipate that you'll carry over approximately $175,000 in there. And we've been building that up really for the purpose of doing new swing, well, new playground equipment in the parks. But then, also, in addition to that, we've also set aside for a pickleball complex, like a new complex. And so, you know, how we decide to spend that in the future is kind of up to you guys as we go through the budgeting process, but I anticipate it being right around that 175 unless, for some reason, these projects go way over, so.
Okay, yeah, questions about that? Anyone have any questions about this particular item? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to make this budget adjustment.
I will make a motion that we approve the budget adjustment for the pickleball courts at Smith Park and the new ADA swing in Whirl.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by council president Walker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Move on to item number two, which is the Teton Lakes Golf Course Restaurant Discussion.
Yeah, and I'll, let me actually, I'll hit item three real quick, just because.
Okay, let's do item three.
So, what this is, we, we came to you, Josh is here as well, we came in, I think it was November, and we brought a budget adjustment to you guys, and you approved it. Basically, the idea was to get all-new body cameras for the patrol, a new server that would help service that system, and then a new fingerprint machine. And the way that we originally were anticipating paying for that was, we did receive a grant for $70,000 that's helping with that equipment, particularly the body cameras, I think that one was for. But then, originally, when I presented it, we anticipated getting an additional $102,000 in grant through the school district in conjunction with the school district for the additional resource officer that we brought on. And after further discussions with the school district, where we kind of landed on that is, instead of the $102,000 a year, they asked that it go 50/50, so they keep 50% and we keep 50%. And so, that equates to about $51,000. And so, in order for us to proceed with ordering those body cameras, which, just for your information, we already got the fingerprint machine ordered, it's coming, we would need to bring forward more contingency. And so, so originally, it was going to be like $3,000 contingency, but this would require us to bring forward $54,000 in the general fund, which still leaves about $276,000 in that general fund. So, really, that is, it's really to replace that other budget adjustment that you approved in November with these, these changes. And then, when we did it in November, we put the revenue to a federal grant, but in reality, they're going to receive that federal grant, and then they're just going to contribute back.
When you say that, you're talking about the school.
The school district. Yeah.
So, help me understand that federal grant. Since you were anticipating receiving the $102,000, is this a grant for just $102,000?
It's $102,000 over three years, so it's $102,000 per year for three years.
So, is that not designated for a resource officer?
It is.
So, what, what's the school district going to do with their $54,000?
Well, Josh, do you, you want to come up and we can kind of?
We pay, we pay the resource officers, don't we?
The school district doesn't.
Yes, we do.
Percentage, they do. It's both ways. We pay.
50%?
No, 70, 30, I think, or 75.
Well, they, we pay it, we pay the resource officers, they contribute back to us a share, it's a contribution back to us. Now, I don't know on the grant, and maybe Josh can answer this, I don't know if it was specifically just for, just wages only. I believe it was primarily for wages.
It is specific for wages and benefits, but the grant was submitted jointly, but it was submitted by the school district, and so there was some miscommunication in the beginning, and that's where.
Josh, can you step over to the mic? Yeah.
So, after some communications meetings, figuring things out, is 50/50 is where we, they're, they're the controllers of the grant, the school district is. And so, it, it is a grant specific for areas that, to increase school resource officers. And so, it was one, they had to get special permission to use it for an officer, because last year, we added a new school resource officer, and so they were able to get that approved to use those funds to help pay the wage for that officer. What they do, I'm not sure, they are the controllers of the, of the grant, and so that's where we came to the.
It just seems to me, if, I mean, we've.
I think what's going on.
They're keeping half the money and we're paying the full salary. I don't understand.
I think what's going on is they're using their grant money to, to be part of the contribution that they're giving back to us.
Correct.
And then, and then being able to use some of their funding for other things. That's kind of what I'm thinking, right?
That doesn't make any sense.
Just, just so you know, they do, they are contributing $205,000, that's the amount they're contributing. So, I think like the mayor's saying, it would reduce what they have to come up with in that 205.
For three years, yeah.
So.
So, that's, so, so it is technically, it is going towards paying the officers.
So, are we getting that money back? Through their contribution?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They make their contribution to us, so that $50,000 will just basically reduce the money that they, that, I mean, their contribution will be the same, it'll just, they'll just have $50,000 more for something else.
Something's not right there.
We're, we're. There's something confusing there, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, and maybe, I might have, I might have confused you a little on some of this, but we would bill them 205 plus the 51. So, their total contribution back to us would be those two amounts together.
So, it'd be about 300.
But you're right.
Oh, 205 plus 50.
They're receiving 102, right, on the grant, and so, and then resubmitting half of that.
See, and the reality of it is, is we thought it was going to be 102 all coming to us. Their understanding apparently was that we were going to split it, and it was just a miscommunication, I guess, from the start, right?
And that's, I'd like to check their books.
It is a three-year.
You can go to the school board meeting tomorrow night.
It has to be like they're keeping $50,000 for a grant that was designated for a resource officer, and they're using that money somewhere else, because they're not giving it up.
Well, I think what they're doing is they're substituting out. So, they're keeping $50,000, but that $50,000 is coming back in that 250, but they're not taking other of their general fund money, too.
Right, yes.
So, they're substituting out the general fund money for this grant.
Yeah.
Which is not the intent of the grant.
But it is coming back to us.
It is coming back for that purpose, yes, but, but that's less that they have to bring.
But at a less, less amount. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. There's something screwy there.
They're giving an extra $50,000 a year.
Councilmember Exon, there is a school board meeting tomorrow night if you.
I may be there. That just doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, we, I mean, we were a little discouraged to hear that, too, because we, we had anticipated in our initial discussions that it would be the 102, but it's not how they budgeted.
So, it's a kind of, we're stuck with it because they're the controllers of the grant.
Yep.
And did you ask them if they'd reconsider? Did anyone ask them that, or?
50% was the reconsider.
Oh, okay, so wait, so what was it before that, then?
They were, they were going to reduce it by the 102 additionally.
Yeah, they.
Well, that seems a little bit.
So, their reconsideration.
It does not make sense. I don't know. Yeah, they were thinking if, if they got the grant, that would just reduce their contribution, basically, is what they were thinking, by 102,000. And then, we were thinking that, you know, it was going to add to our money, and so we were both thinking that we were going to get the whole thing. So, then after negotiations, we decided, well, okay, let's just split it, and that's kind of where we're at here, so.
Okay. Now, it would.
I trust you.
And it's up to you guys, right? I mean, we can either not buy all those body cameras, or you can bring it forward from contingency, and that's really what we're coming to ask you.
Yeah, that's, that's what the budget adjustment is about. So, but our feeling is that we really need to go ahead and get the body cameras and have the computer system that runs them properly and all that kind of thing, and so that's why we're asking for this additional $54,000 on the adjustment. Yes, council member?
Mayor, I think the council need to be aware of that the old body cameras is completely out there. We can't get parts for them, we can't do nothing with them. We got to protect our officers. I think it's really, it's a very smart thing to do is take this, let's give them the equipment they need to document, because we have to document now, and do the budget adjustment.
Is that a motion?
I'll make the motion if we're ready.
Okay, we're ready, yeah. I think we're ready. There'll be opportunity for more discussion in a moment, so go ahead. Yeah, there's a count, there's a motion on the table to approve this, right?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve this budget adjustment for the police department to, to set them out.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, second by council member Reeser. Okay, any further discussion at this point? Yes.
I just want to say, I hope the police know, I fully support all of this, I just wanted to know why the school district wasn't pulling their weight. Yeah, because I, I love resource officers.
Totally in favor of this, but it's frustrating.
But I gotta, I gotta tell you.
That money, rename it and use it for something else. And as a teacher, I said in negotiations and.
And as a teacher, I sat in negotiations and listened to their council president explain how he would not negotiate salaries, even though that is the entire point.
But I got to tell you...
Maybe you can ask for this 51,000 to be dedicated to your...
Somehow, I guess, it's going to be gone.
Yeah, no, I don't, I think we're all in favor of getting done what we need to do here. It's just, it's just, it has been a little bit, we've actually been working on this for quite a while, and, and like I said, they thought they were going to get it all, and we thought we were going to get it all, and through all of the communications and miscommunications, this is where we landed in a negotiating point, so...
Mr. Mayor, just understanding that, that this is a grant that they went after, they had to join up with us on it, they did it in an idea to try to save them some money. We thought that it would, say, gain us some more money. It's definitely a miscommunication back and forth, but I think relying upon our chief and Randy, Mr. Lords, to work this out, I mean, it's definitely a working relationship that we've got to keep strong, after being in it for so many years.
Yeah.
You know, we've, we've worked with this for a lot of years, trying to understand the 70, 20, 70, 30, 50, 50. It's been all over the map, but...
And they may have a similar discussion in their meeting tomorrow night, saying, hey, we were supposed to get 102, and now we're only getting 51, so...
I'm sure it is. But I think relying upon the chief and let them continue to work with Mr. Lords is a great thing.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. We'll move on to item number two, which is the Teton Lakes Golf Course Restaurant Discussion.
I'd just say one thing.
Oh, yes, go ahead, chief, thank you.
I appreciate it. It does make a huge difference. We are hoping to, we're in the process of looking for grants, because this is for the specific body worn cameras. It also transitions to our dash cam, in-car cameras, and so the same company is, is gone. So our, our goal is to move forward with the body cams this year, use that 50,000 next year, try to find another grant to help compensate, to transition into our, our in-car camera systems. And so that's the long-term process that we're looking at, but it's just one step at a time. So thank you for looking ahead for us, so.
And chief, I think you also, bringing up evidence room, is involved with the same company that's gone out, the, the video surveillance, so...
I mean, it's...
It's a whole thing.
The whole process. So we're, we're working on transitioning everything over, so we'll take it one step at a time.
Okay, thank you, chief, appreciate you being here to help us understand that. All right, let's move on to item number two.
Yeah.
Golf course.
So I don't, I don't know that this will be an action item, unless you guys choose it to be an action item, but probably more of an update. So we met, we met with the, well, just to give you an update on blisters at the golf course as well. So they, they obviously, they're about to move into this location, I think, in the next week, over here on Main Street. One of the things that, that they are going to do on the current contract, which goes through March, is they are actually going to move out of the Teton Lakes location during the winter. And if we can come to an agreement on a new contract, then they, they'll move back, you know, once the golf season is up. And that's actually a good thing for us, even though we don't get a little bit of that revenue. It's a good thing for us, because we really need to move the ski rental stuff, if we can, over to the restaurant space, so that we can really get on that remodel project and make sure it's done before golf starts. And so, so we've been working through that. So as we met with the golf board, you know, Colin was there, Brent Menon Hall was there, this was last night, you know, as we went through the options of running it ourselves versus a contract, they were good to try to get back into a contract. I think they recognized that a contractor can do a better job than we can. And then I think it's better financially as well, we recognize that. But there were a couple of things that they want to make sure that we add to the contract negotiations, so I'll just kind of hit kind of a high level. It would be, you know, us working towards a contract, probably in that April, May timeframe. And then we made it very clear that we will not allow a smoker on site, so they can't have that there. It, in the contract, it allows us to choose whether we designate any stalls, like for 45-minute parking or, or temporary parking. There's no promise that they'll ever have parking designated for the restaurant, and even if there is parking designated, we would make no promise that we would enforce it, meaning we're not going to go tow people out of there that parked there for golf. And then the, the idea is, we would approach them with an increase in rent of about, going from about 700 to 1,000 a month. And then, a couple of other little things is, we added to the contract that they need to have grab-and-go type items, so that when people make the turn, they can get things and just move through it quicker. And then probably the other big thing would be, is, you know, anytime we sell their concessions, like their candy bars or drinks or whatever, the pro, golf pro, and then the contractor would work out a split. And so if we're doing it in their behalf, then there'll be a percentage that the golf pro would keep for, for doing that and managing that. And then the other thing is, is we're going to add to the contract that in the months of Ju-, July, sorry, June, July, August, that we would give them a small credit, a couple hundred dollars a month, which allows us access to about 35% of that space if we have a golf event or a tournament, and we want to use some of that space. And then the golf pro would just need to coordinate that effort with the contractor. So those are kind of the big things. So the motion was that we work towards a contract, and so that would be our intent. Now, whether we come to an agreement on that contract to be determined, but that's the direction we're going to move, and just wanted to make sure that you guys all felt good about that process.
Okay, so we will not have this as an action item then, but is there any thoughts, discussion on that, on the, the work that we've done on that with the golf board? Matt, any comments?
I was just going to bring it up, because I was there last night, the golf board just spent quite a bit of time discussing this, and with the golf pro out there, it came to this conclusion, what Matt just brought up. I thought it was very good, workable, if we can find a contractor to be able to come in and service that area, so, I mean, the golf board did spend a lot of time on discussing this and going through it.
Yeah, and I think that's good, I think that's awesome, that they were willing to look at it and try to discuss options and figure out what is going to work for, you know, for both parties. Because in the end, to have it work for both parties is good for us, you know, we want to have somebody that's taking care of things, so. So, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I am really happy with it, I feel like it hit all of my concerns, too. But I did have one question, this doesn't have to do with the contract, but when you said the city would decide whether to designate the parking stalls, and so would the golf board be the one that would make that advisory decision? Because I, I feel like the golf board, at least my understanding, was that they were not in favor of designating any.
I, I don't know that they're totally opposed to maybe a few spots that you could maybe do like a, a short-term parking, but we wouldn't say like, hey, this is short-term parking just for the restaurant. It would be for anyone coming into the clubhouse, like if somebody wanted to just go in and buy inventory in there and then jump back out. But I, I don't think that's the direction we anticipate going. We're just saying that in the contract, that we reserve that right as owners, which when I say owners, it's city and the county, right? As owners to do that if we choose to, so.
Okay, all right, any other questions or comments? Okay, all right, thank you, Matt, we appreciate that. All right, we will move on then to item number seven, which is the mayor's business. And I, I don't really have much of anything, unless you have any questions or any comments.
Mr. Mayor, I talked to the fire department this morning, they just sent three men and one truck, bus truck, down to LA.
Oh, down to California, yeah. That looks pretty bad down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, we wish them all the best down there, hope things go well for them.
They stay at noon, so they should be getting close.
Yeah, okay, also, for one, one item here is, you, you all asked to have, you know, if there's anyone for, like, our, our committees and councils have some information about the folks before we, you know, are asked to ratify them. This is actually, Dan Hannah has been approved by the county, so he lives in the impact area, and this is one of the county's appointments, so we don't, we don't ratify them, they, they do that, you know, themselves. But I just wanted to, even though he's a county appointment, I wanted you to kind of get to know who he is a little bit and a little bit about him. I don't know if, a lot of you probably know Dan.
Yeah.
He actually has served on the planning zoning previously, before their mission, and now they're back, and he's willing to, to do it again. So just, I think, did we send this out to the council?
Yes.
It's in your packet, okay, so if you want to read some more through that later, you're certainly welcome to do that, but, so anyway, but when we have ones that we do the ratifications on, we'll, we'll try to get something similar and get it sent out to you early, so that you can read through it and have some input, yeah.
And did you say that you would ask us for suggestions before, when it's time for the city's next appointment?
New appointments?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, in fact, what I would prefer, oh, Alan, yeah.
We do need one more.
Oh, do we?
We are asking for suggestions.
Okay. I would say anytime you have anybody that you know that would be interested, let me know, because I keep a little file, and then when we have things come up, a lot, a lot of times, go to that file and say, oh, here's someone that was interested. And, but, you know, you need, if you talk to them, someone that's, that you think might be interested, you can say, hey, there may not be an opening right now, but there might be one, you know, within, there, there always is one within the next, usually six months to a year. And so you can say, hey, if, if, when the next time one comes up, would you be interested in helping, and we can keep that on file. But we'll try to let you know, maybe, Alan, if you can, maybe when you have an opening like you do right now, if you could maybe send a message out to the council and say, hey, we've got an opening, are there any suggestions? And, and just want to make it clear that just because you suggest someone, that doesn't necessarily mean they will be appointed, but there's a good chance that they could be, so. And, you know, if we have two or three suggestions, we might try to decide who we feel is the best suited for that, so.
Someone that hit us this time is you guys approved one to replace Vince Haley, and then Robert ran into a situation where he had to resign, because he moved back to Utah, so we put him in his place. Vince says, I'll carry out, and said, we find somebody else. So that's the reason that we do have an...
So, yeah, we've got one that's carrying on longer than his appointed times that we need to replace. So, so, yeah, if you, if you know of someone, let me know, and we'll visit with them and, you know.
What would be helpful is we have this form online, and if you have somebody, I'd be happy to email them the link. It just puts it out there, so we...
Oh, yeah, we can email them a link that they can fill out one of these forms. Yeah.
The one that's open is strictly a city, they have to live in the city, so all of our impact area ones are full now.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments about that item? Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item number nine, A, which is a second reading, and we have ordinance number 1325, so if you remember, is a rezone from 340 West, of 340 West, Second North, from low-density residential one to medium-density residential one. If, is there any questions or comments? Here, here's the parcel right there on the screen.
That's the one by the railroad tracks.
By the canal.
Yeah.
All right. That's the canal there, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that curve is the canal. Yeah. So this item, we approved that and considered it first read, so I would entertain a motion to consider this ordinance second read.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, councilmember Colin Erickson, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by council president Walker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will consider that second read, put it on the calendar to be third read next time. We have no third readings. The consent calendar includes the minutes from the December 18th, 2024 meeting and the approval of the City of Rexburg bills. Is there any questions about either one of those items before we move forward? If none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I make motion, we approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by councilmember Eric Erickson, is that, okay, thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right, just a reminder, I think, of the Chamber of Commerce, State of the Cities and Counties breakfast on Tuesday morning...
21st.
January 21st, right? I appreciate councilmember Chambers and our MEPI director, I asked councilmember Chambers, I'm going to be gone, on a Disney cruise with my grandkids, and so I asked councilmember Chambers, since he is the MEPI director, Madison Economic Partners, to fill in for me, because it seems like that's mostly what people want to know, is what's going on economically in town, and so I asked him to deliver that for me. So I think, though you've all been excited, invited to that, I know a couple of you can't attend, right? You and councilmember Reeser, right? Okay, but we will have tickets for the rest of you, so you can either stop by and pick up a ticket, or just show up and, Deborah, I think Deborah, you'll have a list, right, for them, for the change. So, yeah, if you, if you don't have time to stop by and get a ticket, you can just go and, and tell them that who you are and that Deborah has you on the list. They typically have a list with names on it, so that'll work. And the meeting, again, is at the BYU Idaho Taylor Cultural Hall, yeah, right? At the chapel with the cultural...
They're not doing tickets this year, they're just doing names.
Oh, really? Just names on a list, so you don't need to worry about getting tickets, okay? Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you for being here, Brett, we appreciate your presence here, and, and thank you, officers, we appreciate you here to watch over us, and any, all of the rest of you, thank you for being here. Is there anything else that needs to be brought up before we...
To remind everybody, we have a work meeting on next meeting, at 5:00.
Yeah, and I'll, yeah, and Mike, council president Walker, will be running the meeting next time, and we do have a work meeting at 5 o'clock.
It's 22:00.
What are we working on?
On the 22nd?
22nd.
22nd, yeah.
And I believe on the 22nd is the Capitol, City of the Capitol, that we went to last year. I thought it was very, very beneficial, but it's going to be very hard for any of us to be there with, with our meetings the night before.
Yeah.
It's at 9:00 the next day, so I don't think anybody's...
There's going to be problems.
I'd be going there this, again, this year.
Yeah, that's, that's, that, yeah, that's not very good timing, huh, but, so...